The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We will have an emigration by Councilman James Green and Councilman Willard Bradford will lead us with the prayer. Stand, please.
Let us pray. Oh God, how we thank you for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We ask that you would come in our midst and search our hearts, souls and mind and be acceptable in our sight, greet on us with a holy divine power. Let us operate this meeting in a Christ-like manner for the good of our city and all of our citizens. Bless everybody in my voice. Thank you for what you've done and Lord, we're going to praise you in advance for what you're going to do, is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag and repeat the prayers together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Fola.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Busher.
Here.
Councilman Florida.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Alright, that's from the administrative conference on August the 26th and the meeting on the 27th. It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Is there any council member that has any awards or speaking guest at this time?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Green?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to recognize two of my great friends, Mr. Mo Holmes that's here. How you doing, Mr. Mo? And also Ms. Roxanne Johnson. Thanks, Ms. Chair.
Alright. Okay. Councilman Nupps?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Mrs. Lofton and Mike Spence, the clerk of court and all the folks that have joined them today to come forward briefly, please. Mrs. Lofton, thank you so much for being here today with your family, Mr. Spence, our clerk of court for the parish, several of his employees. We're all here to honor Mr. Gary Lofton, who passed away earlier this year and who was just an outstanding man and a wonderful clerk of court who did so much for our community and for the bar. And of course, as a lawyer, I'm particularly appreciative of everything that he did for me and my colleagues over the years. I've known Mrs. Lofton for a long, long time and her family, decades, and so it's really a privilege for me to invite you to the city council chambers so that the council can honor you. Mr. Chairman, Resolution 115 will honor Mr. Lofton. I'd like to move to suspend the rules so that we can do that now.
Second. Moved by the vice chair and seconded by the chair, suspend the rule. If there's no discussion about that, please vote. Motion carries with six and one out of ten.
Mr. Chairman, if the clerk of council could read the resolution before we adopt it, I would appreciate it.
This is Resolution Number 115 of 2019, a resolution to recognize and honor William Gary Lofton for 16 years as Caddo Parish Clerk of Court and 41 years of service in the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office and otherwise provided with respect thereto by Councilman John Nicholson. Whereas William Gary Lofton, a lifelong resident of Shreveport, died on July the 15th, 2019 at the age of 66. And whereas Gary Lofton, a graduate of Woodlawn High School and Louisiana State University, found his career when he was employed as a deputy clerk at the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office in 1975. He became chief deputy in 1987 and was elected clerk of court by the voters of Caddo Parish in 2000. He served unopposed in that position until 2016, when he retired. And whereas during his 41-year career at the clerk's office, Gary's primary focus was service to the lawyers and customers of the office, which resulted in an exceptional working relationship between the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court and the local bar association. He was honored by the bar association in 2017 as a recipient of the Liberty Bill Award for his dedication in service. And whereas Gary served as president of the Louisiana Clerks of Court Association, president of the retirement board, chairman of the supplemental board, and host of the 2006 Clerk State Convention in Shreveport, he also served as a member of the Board of Election Supervisors and the Jury Commission for Caddo Parish during his term as clerk of court. And whereas Gary enjoyed his life of retirement with his wife of 46 years, Mary Ann Dean Lofton and their children, by taking them to his happy place on Lake Bistino and to Arkansas, where they enjoyed boating, fishing and water activities with extended family and friends. And whereas Mike Spence, who succeeded Gary as clerk of court in 2016, said Gary was, quote, "a great man, a family man, and an example of a great elected official," end quote. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convene, that the Shreveport City Council recognizes and honors William Gary Lofton for 16 years as Caddo Parish Clerk of Court and 41 years of service in the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office. This resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals with one original presented to William Gary Lofton's family and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the City of Shreveport. And the resolution has been signed by all seven council members.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second. Moved by the vice chair and seconded by Councilman Green. Please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Would you like to invite anybody to have some remarks?
I would welcome any remarks from the family, from Mr. Spence, if you'd like to say one.
Well, any of you that knew Gary knew that he loved his job, he loved his work, he loved the people he worked with and the people that he worked for, so I know he would appreciate this honor today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The clerk is looking this way.
Mike just don't want to say a word. I understand. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Gary was super kind to a close, close friend of mine before she passed and he was, she was employed there. And I'm sure Cheryl is very much so missed over there, but that just, her and Gary were kind of tight, you know, and so it just touches my heart to even hear or see something like this. So I appreciate you for doing this resolution.
Yes, he was a great man.
Great man. Thank you, Ms. Lofton.
Thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
I yield to Councilman Bradford.
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Chairman, I have a special guest today, Laura Altman, who is the executive director of Step Forward. Yet last year, Ms. Altman came to the council and made an appeal on a project that she was launching, and it was the Thrive Project at the JS Clark School. The council chose to assist her in that endeavor, and I appreciate her contacting me and wanting to come today and give us a progress report on that project. So Ms. Laura, and if you brought some guests, whoever you want to bring up with you, please come up and proceed as you see appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, Chairman Bowman and members of the council, Mayor Perkins. I'd like to introduce my friend Roxanne Johnson and also my friend Takara Huckabee, who are here with me today. And I want to mention that Roxanne, when you hear about this work, you'll understand if you know her, really was the catalyst for the attention given to this issue that we're going to talk about today. And Takara serves as the Director of the Lighthouse Program for Volunteers of America, one of our most active partners within the Step Forward partnership. And as Mr. Bradford mentioned, I serve as the Executive Director of Step Forward. We are a nonprofit community partnership working to ensure success for every child in Northwest Louisiana, and we're here today to thank you for being a part of that partnership. We were the fortunate recipient of a civic appropriation grant this year, and I wanted to share with you how those dollars were utilized. So one of the primary barriers to success for children in Northwest Louisiana is trauma. And trauma can take many forms. It can be abuse or neglect, it can be the incarceration of a parent, it can be substance abuse or domestic violence in the home and other sources. And we know that many, many children in our community experience trauma from all socioeconomic backgrounds, and it can impact their academic performance and ultimately their life's success. So it will not surprise you when you think about the fact that when children come to school sad, mad, or scared, they often have difficulty concentrating or getting along with their peers. And what that looks like is behavior problems in school and in the community. But the good news is, we know that childhood trauma can be overcome by building resilience. And the way that we do that is through exposing children and adults to positive people in their lives, to opportunities to build competencies or find out things that they're good at, and to learn to manage strong emotions. And that's what we've done through what we're calling the Thrive Initiative, because that's what we want to see, is our community thriving. And the way that we can do that is to build that resilience. So I want to thank you for your investment in that process, and we want to tell you a little bit about it. And then we're going to let some children who can speak much more eloquently than we can to tell you how this has impacted them. So through the VOA Lighthouse Project, we have provided opportunities, thanks to your investment, for children to build relationships with positive people, learn to manage their emotions through activities like drama, art, gardening, and yoga. And here with me, as I mentioned, is Takara Huckabee. She's Director of the Lighthouse Program, and she has shared with me and others that the vast majority of behavior problems at the Lighthouse happen with fifth graders. No surprise. And so I want to ask her to share with you some of the outcomes of the Thrive Project, in particular, the fifth graders.
Good afternoon. So as Laura mentioned, we did service about 51 students who participated in the Thrive Initiative. And within those 51 students, many of those students were fifth graders. And of the 51, only nine of the 51 received any type of behavioral reprimand during the Thrive Program during their participation time. And of those nine that did, zero were fifth graders. Last year, that was the heaviest group. So we had the most behavior management issues with fifth graders last year before this program. This year, we had zero. So I, I mean, to me, that is a significant change. In addition, we noticed, when we spoke with the teachers of the fifth graders, they shared things like, they could see the fifth graders using the tools that were given, so they would see them counting on their sides rather than reacting to whatever was happening in response, or they'll see them take a deep breath, you know, before they respond, you know. So those types of tools that they gathered through the Thrive Participation and the yoga piece in particular, really, really made a difference this year. And so we are so thankful that we were able to incorporate these things into our Lighthouse Program.
Roxanne, do you want to make any comments? Anyway, I just would like for y'all to join me in thanking Roxanne Johnson for starting this work in this community. Can everybody join me? Thank you, Roxanne. And last but not least, we're going to let you watch your investment in action.
Some people might have a condescending view of yoga, especially kids' yoga. One Caddo school, though, is putting yoga to the test, and the results might shock you. Orla Wanda Munoz goes in depth on a pilot program teaching kids more than namaste.
From stretching to singing songs to those awkward downward dog poses, students from JS Clark Elementary are learning something they've never done before: yoga.
I think that yoga is a great thing for every child.
This yoga class runs for 45 minutes, five days a week. It's a pilot program currently offered after school for kids who attend Lighthouse. It's part of Step Forward's Thrive Partnership to incorporate art, music, dance, and exercise in schools.
What we want to accomplish is to create opportunities for children to build resilience. Resilience overcomes adversity. None of us are born with resilience, and the good news is, it can be built at any time, any age.
For some, yoga is a hippie practice that seems like a waste of time, but there's more to it than deep breathing and meditating. A study by the Center for Education Policy Research at Harvard University found that students who conducted mindfulness-based practices showed improvement in several areas. Another article published by Harvard Medical School claims that kids who do yoga see improvement in memory, self-esteem, academic performance, and classroom behavior.
We work on knowing ourselves through affirmations and self-confidence. We also work on focus techniques so that we are able to be more alert in schools as well as in life.
Stephanie Allen is the only yoga instructor in Shreveport, a Bojor, who specifically works with children. She starts with gratitude. Each kid has their own journal to write in.
And that way, we can get at our emotions, get at anything that's going on with us, and not worry about how it's written. So we're really giving them to the joy of life.
During class, she reiterates her no judgment policy. In fact, Headit listens closely to each student, and if they're willing to share, they talk briefly about what they wrote down with the class. Then comes the active work: breathing. We all know how to do that, right? Actually, we don't. That's where that giant goofy-looking ball, better known as a Hoberman sphere, comes to play.
A lot of our kids breathe from their chest and not from their diaphragm, so when they breathe, they're breathing not through their lungs, but not, you know, the oxygen that they deserve into their brains.
At the end of the first semester, Step Forward will track student attendance, behavior, and grades to see if the program is a real success. But even without the hard data, teachers and administrators who work with these kids at Lighthouse are seeing big changes.
When our kids first come to the Lighthouse Program, they have a hot meal. After the meal, it's generally homework time, so for them to go from the meal to yoga, then homework, it helps to redirect that energy and focus them in on the task aheads.
That's where teachers are seeing the greatest change, but even the kids recognize that something's different.
Like when we had a test, we went to yoga class, and she taught us to do great, and it really helped me by using the strategies that she gave us.
A student didn't listen to you, the teacher asked you to do more than one thing at once. I feel like I get to, like, deal, like, handle problems.
It helps me calm my mind body, so I'm not getting mad. It doesn't, like, get me in trouble, like, trying to fight anyone.
Kind of cool, whatever works. Step Forward plans to continue the yoga class for one more semester, once they've tracked a full year of data. Goal is to put yoga in more schools throughout Shreveport and Lobe.
Thank you all so much for the opportunity to share this with you. And I also wanted to say thank you to Mayor Perkins. The Thrive Project is a project of Step Forward's, my brother's keeper team, and Mayor Perkins has named Mr. Casey Brown as chair of that team, so we are excited to see what we will be able to do under your leadership. Thank you so much.
Laura, let me just say before you vote...
Yes, sir.
When you came and made the presentation about the effectiveness, did you feel that this initiative would do, we believe in it, and I think the results of the program has been a great success? It's our job to assist young people. I mean, we don't try to assist them to make their lives better. Who will?
That's right.
And I want to thank you and Ms. Huckabee and certainly Ms. Johnson, who's never shy for words, but today she is. But to come here, we get a, we get a report for all of the assistance that we give through our civic appropriations and writing, but you chose to come and make a personal appearance. I want to thank you for that. I hadn't seen the news report, but it was very enlightening and very good as it relates to what has happened to these young people this semester. So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Huckabee, and we look forward to continue working with you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for investing in those children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Butcher said that we ought to try to get us a class schedule separately, see if we can see if we have some private class.
It would have to be in private.
It would have to be in private.
I'll do a lot of things, be a gentleman, but not younger.
Some of us need to learn how to breathe, just a little bit. Councilwoman Fuller?
I just want to acknowledge some special guests I see in the audience today, Ms. Deidra Robertson, and some of her students from Community Renewal, and also her mom is with her today, too. How are y'all doing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Commissioner-elect Jim Telfaro back in the back, back there,
for Caddo Parish Commission, District 8, correct?
Correct.
And also, my Caddo Parish Commissioner, Mr. John Atkins, is in the audience, and I'd like for him to come up and speak for just a second.
Sure, I just was surprised to see somebody sitting next to Mr. Telfaro, my old friend. I just wanted to say hello to who makes Mr. Telfaro look good, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Butcher. My name is John Atkins. I am the current sitting Commissioner of Caddo Parish District 9, so I'm here representing the people of Caddo Parish and the people of Shreveport who reside in District 9 and beyond. As Councilman Butcher knows, there's an intersection in our district that is very challenging. It's the intersection of Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road. And as you all know, there's been a great deal of development in that part of the community in recent years. Southern Trace has continued to grow, Long Lake has continued to grow, Provenant has grown, there's a new development called The Grove that's developing on Wallace Lake, and then Elysian Fields is developing on Wallace Lake. And then we have Ascension School developing at the far eastern end of Southern Loop. So there's a lot of traffic in that area, a lot of traffic at that intersection of Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road. And yet, that intersection is already very concerning to Councilman Butcher and myself. There have been a number of accidents there. It's been the number-one area of concern that's been raised by my constituents over the last four years, is the concern for the safety at Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road. So as you all know, we've been working, the parish and the city have been working together to try to resolve this problem by putting in a traffic light in that location. The cost of that traffic light is projected to be $250,000. The parish is proposing we split it, $125,000 each. The parish has also offered to contribute an additional $50,000 to cover future maintenance of that light, recognizing that the city has historically maintained lights. The parish doesn't have that capability on our staff, so we'd certainly want to be fair with respect to future costs of any capital installation there. So I'd like to encourage you guys to please work with the parish and work for the citizens of Shreveport and Caddo Parish to install a light there at Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road, and let's work together to get that project funded. Thank you for your time. I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. It's been a pleasure working. I think one of the things that I ran on was to be able to work with the Caddo Parish Commission, and we both have seen all of the outcries for this light, and it's been going on for quite some time. So I appreciate you working with the parish, and of course, like I said yesterday, Mayor, I appreciate your office taking this, you know, seriously and getting the light out there, because I really do feel that it's going to save some lives. So thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Police Chief Selection Committee has been conducting their meetings, and I'd like to thank Mr. Telfaro, soon to be Commissioner Telfaro, for participating on that committee. I'll have a nominee for you all by next council meeting, so just want to give you a heads-up about that. Last week, we held a community bond meeting at Mamie Hicks. We were in Council District 8 with Councilman Bradford at the rec center and with also with the African-American Chamber. We hosted them here. We have been holding several of these meetings throughout the city at community centers and with civic organizations. This week, we will be at Valencia Park at 6:00 PM, and if any citizens are interested on the following schedule, just check shreveportla.gov for upcoming meetings in your area. Also today, we have some of the youth from Community Renewal here, as Councilwoman Fuller already pointed out. Can you all stand for me? Can their gracious escorts, Ms. Deidra and Ms. Brenda, stand as well? We thank y'all for bringing them. So the Community Renewal Operation Hope, students from the Friendship House are learning about civic engagement and their responsibilities as citizens. So they came to see us today. The students are from Byrd in Bogertee, Washington, that have interest in city government and how it operates. They're working together to figure out creative ways that they can make a difference in Friendship House neighborhoods and where they live and love their community around them. They participated in the Love Shreveport Cleanup. Thank y'all so much for that. And I have partnered with Shreveport Green to continue in the cleanup efforts. So I just want to say thank you so much, and I'm hoping that every citizen of Shreveport is taking some cues from you all on how we should all be responsible and how we should all love our city. So thank you so much for coming out. Lastly, well, sorry, this is the second-to-last note. Many of us knew and loved Mr. Cedric Murphy, who was a regular in these council meetings. He was instrumental in fighting for change and promoting education awareness for our citizens with disabilities. At this time, I would like to present a proclamation to honor his legacy, and I will be at his funeral this weekend to give it to his family. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Cedric Murphy will be honored by family and friends on the occasion of his advocacy for humanity on September 10th, 2019, whereas we honor his courage for organizing the grassroots community to engage in direct action to assure the civil and human rights of people with disabilities to live in freedom. Whereas Cedric Murphy spoke to educate all, especially the disabled Americans, on how to become their own voice. Now therefore, I, Adrian D. Perkins, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, as Mr. Cedric Murphy Day. And the City of Shreveport, and urge everyone to celebrate this wonderful day and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shreveport to I believe there'll be a vigil for Mr. Murphy after the council meeting today, so for all those interested, please attend. The last note is tomorrow is September 11th. I won't get a chance to address the council or as many people in the public, but I do not, I'd be remiss not to talk about the impact that September 11th had on my life. It very much set the course for me. I'm confident it set the course for me to be sitting here in this seat today, but I was a junior at Captain Shreve, embolism... in this seat today, but I was a junior at Captain Shreve embology II class when the World Trade Centers were attacked and our country was under attack, and despite me looking at a lot of schools to go to for track and field and for education, that was the morning that I made up my mind that I would go and serve our country. So, just, you know, keep those families in your prayers that lost loved ones on that day, and those families that are continually losing loved ones in the wars that we're fighting. Don't forget them. Mr. Chair, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to make a request that since we won't be here together tomorrow as this body, if we could stand and pause for a moment for those folk, for 9/11.
Mr. Chair, let me, before we move forward, acknowledge Caddo Commissioner Lane Carthon, who appeared in the chambers for a minute. Would you see Mr. Carthon?
Mayor, did you say that the kids from, was it Captain, no, Bogertie and Byrd, they'd be here through their time meeting?
I don't know. No, 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 they're going to have to step out.
We'll try to stay on our best behavior till y'all leave. All right. Mr. Green, does anyone have anything relative to property standards for Mr. Green? I think everybody said they have a lot of emails they're sending to you, so we'll just do that.
He tried to preempt us before the meeting.
Ah, okay. Let everybody, so thank you for your service. All right. We all got our revenue collection plan from Ms. Jones, and I assured the bond for forfeiture from Mr. Crell, and I said Attorney Office. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
No, sir.
All right. Come in.
Mr. Ryan, amend.
Ryan, would you state your name and your address?
This is Josh Hathorn.
Josh, and you're Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You state your name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Ryan Amend, and I live at 1020 Crestmont Street, Bojor City.
My name is Josh Hathorn. I live at 612 Parlane Circle in Shreveport, and it'd be better if I went first.
That would be fine.
Okay. We're here to talk to you about a potential oil and gas lease. I submitted some of these papers on the website. I don't know if y'all got them, but it'll be easier if I can, if you can see this as I'm talking, so I'm going to pass these out to you. Okay, this is for us to go in and re-enter a couple of wells that produced years ago and that haven't produced for quite some time, but it's covering some acreage that the City of Shreveport owns the fee title to, which covers 29 and 1/2 acres, and then some acreage within the city real close to here, where the Shreveport, either through the roads or through fee titles to some property, owns another 33 acres. And we're, so it's a total of 63 acres that we're attempting to lease, for a three-year term, $150 per acre, which means a check to the city of $9,451.50 for a 1/5th royalty, and it's for the depths of, from the surface of the earth to 6,000 feet below the surface of the earth, which does not cover the Haynesville Shale, so we're not talking about that right here. And if you're not familiar with this from years ago, it's not, you do not grant the right to lease, you just grant the right to the State Mineral Board to conduct an open bidding to lease the property. So it's, we're looking for a resolution from the city that authorizes the State Mineral Board to do that. That's all I've got. If you want to continue with...
Question?
Yes.
Have you sent this to the City Attorney's Office?
I have sent an email to the City Attorney's Office. I have not heard from the City Attorney yet.
When did you send the email, sir?
It would have been months ago.
Can you resend it?
I sure can.
Chair. Councilman Butcher. You also have talked to people within the city, too, correct?
Yes, the other two, the City of Shreveport is the main mineral owner in the boxed area, this 80-acre property or rectangle. We've also spoken to a couple of churches which own the, or other majority owners within that area, and they are, once we can get the city on board, we can move forward with them. They were amenable to our lease terms as well.
I mean, have you talked to anybody else in the city besides the City Attorney's Office?
Malcolm Statlander.
Okay. And where did it go with Malcolm?
It was just, it was, I was recommended to go to the City Attorney, and then I was recommended to come here and speak with y'all.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Nicholson.
You said a 1/5th royalty?
Yes.
What about a 1/4th royalty? That's pretty common around here, isn't it?
It is common in some areas. If that was, if you would like that to be a minimum requirement before you pass it to the state, that's on the table.
I'll just say, for the benefit of everybody in the room, that a 1/4th royalty is what's often paid, and I should hope that whenever the City of Shreveport grants mineral leases, that it would get a 1/4th, because that is the custom. And then the bonus of 150 acres, we probably could do a little better on that, but I'll leave that to the City Attorney and the Mayor's good discretion.
You.
Yes, sir.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I still say it needs to go to the City Attorney.
Well, and I, Councilman, I agree. I may suggest it.
Attorney Crell.
Mr., is it Mr. Hathorn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have your information, and I will get with Mr. Statlander, and one of us will contact you within the next couple of weeks.
Sounds great. Thank you.
If that's the case, I don't have anything to say.
Well, let me ask you a couple questions, because I mean, I just saw this chart, and it's in my district.
Yes, sir.
So, I may have been preoccupied, but tell me again, what is the resource that you are trying to segregate from this property?
So, there's two existing wellbores that produced for decades within this block, and we are, they have since been plugged and abandoned in the late 80s, early 90s. We're trying to go back in and re-enter those already existing wellbores.
Okay.
It is for oil, not...
Or not natural, I mean, not to Haynesville Shale property, but oil. And we had oil. I grew up in this neighborhood, actually, and there were several oil wells back in the 60s. In regards to the residents that would be on the surface of this property, would they benefit?
The residents who own the minerals would benefit by getting royalties, just like the city would, once we negotiate lease terms with them. But we're not moving forward with residents until we can get the majority, if we can get the majority lease from the bigger owners.
Okay, all right. So, I would like to have your information so that we can make a discussion communications, because once we, and I think it may flow okay, because you're not talking about a whole lot of additional drilling, that we can go into the pockets that already exist, and I do want the residents to be aware of what's going to be happening in that area.
Right. Yes, sir.
So, you have a card, anything, I mean, while you're here, all we can communicate, just give me your number and I'll call you, okay? Who can I contact?
Okay. You ready?
Yeah.
318-734-8496.
Okay, and Carthon?
That's me, Josh Hathorn.
Josh Hathaway?
Yes, sir. Hat-Hat-Horn, H-A-T-H-O-R-N.
And Josh has partnered with Maransco Energy, my grandfather over there. We own the wells just to the west of there off Hearn and Helby-Huckabee. We've operated those since 1991.
Okay.
That's why we're looking at this property, because it fits our program.
It's easy, contiguous area, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just as the progress proceeds, I would just want to be aware.
Yes, sir.
And then certainly once we go into the Allenville Pocket that you're looking at, I want to include the residents in that project, so they'll be aware, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Councilman Bradford, would you yield?
Yes, sir.
Is this what you meant yesterday when you said that there was this oil in them there hills?
You remember me saying that, don't you?
Yes.
Got a good memory. But I say what, we got to do what, though? We got to go get it for it.
Mr. King Craft.
Ken Craft, 157 Archer, 71105, and thank you, Councilman Nicholson, for honoring Gary Lofton. And I had sent y'all something in July, and it's come to fruition, and I told Gary once, he was the second most popular elected official in Northwest Louisiana, he said, "Second? Who's first?" And I jokingly said, "Charlie Hennington." "No!" I said, "Steve Prater." And Gary said, "Point made." But second's not bad. The 100A, and by the way, how about that chipshot 58-yard field goal? I really think the bond committee did a good job, and I wish they had included, and it's not too late, to do air raid sirens, make sure we have a stormproof, F-5 proof, special ops 9/11 call center. We don't on Texas. We have a building which is wonderful and serves its purpose, but could be destroyed by an F-1 twister. And perhaps one or more of the new fire stations, if it's approved, perhaps the new SPD headquarters. Cost a little more, but you're going to survive an F-5, like a fire station did a few weeks ago in Kansas. Direct hit, no damage. They paid about a 12% premium on traditional construction, but their firefighters and their equipment were there to respond after the storm went through. Greensburg, Kansas, had an F-5 on May 4 of '07, a Friday. The town was destroyed, but the two structures remaining, grain silos, cylindrical. Counterclockwise winds need a right angle to destroy your house, your school, your church, your business. They cannot grab cylinders or igloos. Let's think about that. The cost of the fire stations concerns me a little. $3 million each, Texarkana on KTL. The other day, they're planning a new one in the northern part of Texarkana, Arkansas, estimated $2 million. Googling, cost of two-story, 10,000-square-foot fire stations, it runs from $1.5 to $1.7 million. If the $3 million includes a stormproof F-5 fire station, I'm for it. Otherwise, it sounds a trite bit high. In 1980 in April, I had recommended four things to get higher, and we did the Old Dirt Streets, 186 miles, there's that 186 figure again. We did fire department, paramedics, ambulances, and we did an operating budget reserve 10%, but we backslid since. And then in '01, we did a new city jail. The one thing I recommended 39 years ago we haven't done is provide O and M costs for new buildings. I'll support these things in November if y'all provide, out of the 186 million, enough money for Shelley to maintain the buildings. Let's don't do a new tax, like sales tax or property tax. Let's take money from the 186 and maintain our buildings. That would be the way to go. Thank you so much.
Mr. Craft, would you take a question for me, please? Now, that F-5 over at the communication building, and I can assure you, if I'd have served on that communication board like Councilman Butcher, I would have made sure that that would have been F-5 ready.
Well, it can be renovated to be F-5 ready. You could put an igloo over it. You could, you really could build over it and deny the winds the opportunity to destroy the building. Architects can do that. Structural civil engineers can do that.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman, because I have a story for you. I'll tell you later.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
John Settle, Fort Tillwood. I wanted to speak on the traffic light on Wallace Lake and Southern Loop. I travel that area about 80 times a year, 40 or 45 on Saturday mornings, leaving Providence, and then on Wednesday afternoons, going down Wallace Lake. So I'm kind of, I'm very familiar with the intersection. There's five problems there, or five issues, I think, to consider. One, very high traffic area there, and it has increased more and more with the development that was mentioned by Commissioner Atkins, very high. In fact, they even have a traffic light now in North Ferry in Southern Loop at that intersection, which they really needed. I've cycled that, and it was dangerous. Another issue there is really high speeds. It's unfortunate, Wallace Lake is 45 miles going south. Southern Loop is 50 miles going east and west, so when you're at an intersection, you can look around, but traffic comes real quickly. Third issue there, if you've been there, is just the topography. Wallace Lake gradually goes down to the intersection of Southern Loop, which goes east and west. If you're at that intersection looking east, a lot of trees there. You don't see too much at the Southern Loop, especially because there's a little incline, and the cars come, suddenly you see them, maybe 100 yards away, and they're driving 50 miles an hour. You look the other way, west, they're coming up a hill. So, I've been there plenty times and worried just trying to turn right. It is a very tough area, topography-wise, and so I think it's especially important that the commission has agreed to put half the bill, to my knowledge, it's the first time or a long time, it's been a shared project. Now, fourth real good reason is that Mr. No on the commission is for this, and Mr. Atkins is the financial Mr. No. He would vote against anything that is not strictly government-oriented, even if it helped his family out. He is Mr. No, and when he supports a project like this, it's a solid project. He's voted more no's than probably everybody else, and that means it's passed the test for good government to do that, providing a basic service. Now, lastly, I understand that there's going to be a big Christmas party out at Southern Trace at somebody's home at Christmas. I probably don't want to be invited, but, you know, if you're going there by Wallace Lake or Southern Loop, you're going to need that red light there, especially on the way home for your safety purposes. So, that's another good reason, and those of you that get invited, and hopefully over here, would you let me know how the party's going to go? It's a good, we need five good reasons for that light.
John, do you take a question for me?
I would love to, sir.
When you ride out there, do you ride against the traffic?
I ride as the law allows, which is on...
What is the law allow?
The law says...
Does it allow you to ride?
You're supposed to ride with the traffic within three feet of the white marker. I usually ride on the white marker or to the right on the shoulder, depending on whether or not they have one of those wake-up strips or how trashy it is, but I ride very close to the white line.
Do you wear those little bright spinner things on your shoes?
I do. I have them on some sexy Lycra. I have a red light on my bike. I have yellow strips. I try to be highly visible.
Thank you, John.
I'm sorry if I embarrassed you, Mr. Nicholson. Or my councilperson, Ms. Fuller. Lester Smith.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lester Smith, 4148 Theo Street. I rise to discuss an issue that's been brought to my attention by some of the peoples in the District F, Mooretown area, and I saw it on the news, an incident, an African-American male was accosted by the Shreveport Police Department, kicked in the face and tased. It happened August 5, and I received word Sunday, yesterday, that the chief, this incident had been taken care of, where the officer was concerned, but my concern is, this is more or less the remnants of what had transpired earlier in District F, and it's some of the things that, one of the things I expected to happen, and we're not accusing all police officers as being bad officers. I talked with the chief, I think he's a good man. Talked with some other officers, I think they're good people, but that incident there, it just, it rocked me to my core, because they had this man accosted. He was in compliance, and this officer kicked him in his face, and after kicking him, tased him. And this is what I'm assuming, and this is what the peoples are telling me in the district, is that this is because of what has transpired with the clean slate, that this is the result of that... that this is the results of that, you know, police officer can, can just come and harass as they see fit. And I just, I wanna say, I think it was deplorable, what happened. And we don't need to see incidents like that happening in our community, when I personally am trying to work with the chief and the police department as to create a community where police and the citizens can work hand in hand. But incidents like this make that a hard task to complete. So, I know we can't stop people from being who they are. And, but I think as a paid professional, police officers have a duty to conduct themselves in a better way than they do when it comes to the African-American community. And there's some things that maybe as an African-American male, I should do as well when it comes to police officers. But we can, we can ill afford to allow a man that's complying to be handled the way that young man was handled. And then the charges that he was alleged charged with, all those charges were dropped. So, they're telling me it was a frivolous arrest and a frivolous attack. It, it, it had no business transpiring, and we don't want to see that happening. We want law and order, so don't let anybody tell you that we don't want law and order. I got a call the other day, as it pertains to a street in the district. I called the chief and asked him, "Sir, can you give us, give that area a few more officers?" And he agreed. And that's the kind of relationship I wanna have with the police department, a working relationship, where we can call and make requests for things and get them done. My time has expired? Thank you.
Mr. Versa Clark.
Versa Clark, seventy-six twenty-six, Tampa Way, Mayor, City Council. In twenty thirty, greatest report is the dynamic, creative, and flourishing powerhouse of the Arcoletex region. Our region combines the economic opportunity, diversity, and cultural excitement of a growing city with the friendliness of a small town. Our neighborhoods, safe, clean, and welcoming, are connected by shared civic spirit and by a network of inviting public spaces and transportation choices. Downtown and nearby neighborhoods in the city core are vibrantly alive with residents and businesses in historic and new buildings. A revitalized waterfront district links Cross Bayou and the city center to Shreveport's origins of the, on the banks of the Red River. Unutilized properties throughout the city have been restored to community use with housing, shops, offices, or parks and other public spaces. Downtown and our diverse neighborhoods offer attractive and affordable choices for young singles and couples, families with children, empty nesters, and retirees. Because of the culture of excellent education and access to lifelong learning from the cradle to the senior years, the Shreveport-Caddo area has the qualified workforce to support an expanding twenty-first century economy. Established and emergencies industries such as natural gas, manufacturing, education, biomedicine, cybersecurity, green building and energy, healthcare tourism, film production, and digital media that depends on local talent and entrepreneur startups nurture new businesses, new industries. As a transportation crossroads of all, of rail lines and highways, including an extended I forty-nine, and with a successful river port, we reach out to the nation and the world. Shreveport is the greatest and healthiest city in the South committed to and resource and energy sustainability and enhancing access to healthy lifestyles. Our landscape is enriched by a natural network of greenways and bayous offering recreation in nature. Shreveport's youth and college graduates, as well as newcomers, are proud of their beautiful city, cohesive community, and culture of opportunity. All citizens choose to be part of an innovative city on the move. This was the vision that was in the twenty thirty master plan. They laid that out pretty good. And I'm waiting to hear what this council, this administration's real vision is.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, seven one one oh one. Hummingbirds hum, they don't know the words, as a joke. Now, I think it's a very good, wonderful idea to recognize and honor Gary Lofton for the sixteen years in Caddo Parish Clerk of Court, and for the forty-one years of great and fantastic service that he had been doing in the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office. I never got to know him, but I give him the best respect that there is. And he will really deserve the honor and recognition as of today. I'm glad you voted yes, because I was looking forward to saying something about that. And James, I saw it yesterday that you were very disgusted, because you felt like you weren't getting what you wanted. Do like this, turn the creature into a toad, and you'll have your revenge. Now, I need to bring up something that I talked about just two weeks ago. For those who were watching two weeks ago by television, I said that these people who are scammers, pretending to be who they are not, I say, don't fall for these little precious scams. They just want your money, and they'll rip you off if they get their precious little chance. Don't fall for it. They're sick. Every one of them are sick. They tried that on me, and every time I hang up on them, I just know that they're sick. I even say, like, "You're sick," because they are. I'm not gonna take their little fun and games. I just trace right down and block them, which they rightfully deserve. Now, on last Thursday, September fifth, I got called two times by two sickos. One at one nineteen P M. at a four one two, two oh nine, nine two seven five. And then at two sixteen P M. at four oh eight, two seven two, eight six eight three. They said, "Press one." I said, "Press this, click." They, I gave them what they deserved. They're sick. And they better stay there, too, in case they go too far. What they don't know is there's two things about me that they don't know. I'm, they're the green light, but I'm the red light. They're the grass, and I'm the lawnmower. I'll cut them down to size, creeps. And besides, if I had my wish, I'd take them to court, but I don't know how that would ever pan out, because it might not stand up in court. But they're getting everything they deserve from me, hung up, traced, written down, and blocked.
Chair Mayor. Sammy, I got one for you. What did the Papa Tomato say to the baby tomato when he was falling behind?
Catch up.
Yeah.
Sammy, I know a good lawyer up here.
Mr. Rudolph Glass.
Good afternoon. Rudolph Glass, seventeen thirty-five Arlington, three four seven eleven zero three. I am here today because I am, I'm really upset. I've been dealing with, uh, streets and drainage for about, well, three months for this, um, thing that I'm going through. I recently became the president of the Lakeside Area Neighborhood Association. And one of the things that happened when I would go and talk to people, they would ask me, "Um, what are you gonna do, and how long is it gonna last?" So, I told them that I was here to do some work. And I asked them if they had any type of issues, to write them down, and we would deal with them. Well, I've been dealing with streets and drainage for about three months, about the same things. I called Mr. Bradford Friday, but I tried to do everything on my own to keep from bothering him. I first talked to, uh, Richard Davis, who gave me the runaround. After telling me he'll be by my house about three different times, he brought me an ordinance and told me that what I needed done was not the city's job, and he wasn't doing it. And he took that time to come by my house to give me that, but when it came time to do what needed to be done, he didn't do it. I've had instances where they've came out and said I had a, there was a leak in the middle of the street, uh, the reason I had mud in front of the house. They marked it twice within the last three years, and hadn't done anything else about it, and has not said anything to me about what was going on. I came up and, um, I talked to someone at the mayor's office, and, um, can't think of the young lady's name, but she was real nice, and she kinda gave me some advice on how to deal with it. Well, I talked to Mr. Negret. I saw him at a neighborhood meeting and talked to him, and he told Levon White to ride me around and show me the, um, issues that I had. Well, he didn't do it the first time. He called me in his office, and he wrote down the things I told him. Well, two weeks later, nothing had happened. I came back, I talked to, um, Mr. Negret again. So, this time, Levon White rode me around, and I showed him, no, he followed me around, and I showed him everything that I needed done. Well, nothing still wasn't done. Got me in touch with Gary Norman. He called me. The conversation, I was not satisfied, so I went back to the mayor's office. And, um, he called me back, and he wrote, he actually rode me around, and I showed him everything that needed to be done.
Mr. Glass, your time has expired, but I, I will say that in my experience, the department heads are very responsive to citizens, and they do what they can. Uh, I'm sure that if you've had an experience inconsistent with that, that the mayor and his staff will, will help you work through it.
Can you email me, like, directly with this issue? Uh, and that way, I can track it alongside you. And if it's a resource problem, we'll let you know, but, uh, we, we definitely owe you, uh, better status updates and follow through with this. So, just email me directly, and I'll, I'll monitor it alongside you.
Okay, now, can I, uh, I have a little bit more I wanted to say. Can I get it in just another minute or so?
Mr. Glass, let me, let me do this. We, we, we've caught, we've kind of, um, had an understanding that, that we would try to, um, adhere to the three, three-minute rule as much, but I can engage you for a minute on some issues that you can, uh, expound on what you, what you would like to see. Now, you, you contacted me on Friday.
Right.
And through the city council's office. We reached out to the administration. For, for an explanation on why some of these things had not been done. Mayor, I think, I think what needs to happen here, because I encourage, Mr. Glass, um, I, 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 I've said it once, I've said a hundred times, that whenever our neighborhoods can organize into neighborhood organizations, where they can collectively meet and discuss the issues of their neighborhood, it's a good thing. And in, and in, and in response to that, the city needs to be receptive and responsible and bring in some type of closure. It may not be to their satisfaction, but that should be some degree of closure to the issue that they bring forward. I tell my, my neighborhood groups, and I have several, that I cannot dispatch one city worker to address any city issue as relates to work. I can, I, I can engage my council, uh, staff, because that's, that's who we hire. I didn't hire any ill people. But at the same time, what Mr. Glass shared with me, and what he's expressed today, in the timeframe that it has, that it, that it has taken, it's not, it's not fair that nothing has happened in the three months that he've engaged the water and sewer people, that he don't have no-
Streets and drainage, right?
I'm sorry. Streets and drainage. That nothing has happened. So, can you, can you establish a policy to where either, because again, I, and, and he said it, that he tried to lessen my involvement, because he, he, he has the ability, and that we have various outlets in which citizens can, can, um, express themselves and what the needs of their areas are. But even in that apparatus, I think, I think some type of response and some type of closure and resolve, whether it's resolved or not resolved, but there's some progress reports and some, sometime within the, I think, a reasonable period that the citizens should, should know what, what happened with that, with that request. So, and Mr. Glass, uh, has done due diligence in his, in his wanting to get the issues of his neighborhood resolved. He's got a meeting coming, he invited me to his next meeting. And I wanna be able to, like him, express the, the response of the city in a positive way. So, what's your, what's your position on, on establishing some policy that we can bring resolve to these, these type of requests?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, but the, the responsiveness is, that's, that's a failure on our behalf. But I will say that that's the exception. Uh, not only is it in our policies, but it's the guidance that I put out to my staff. Obviously, we're resource constrained often, or time constrained, or there could be some constraint to where we can't solve every problem that comes to us. But at a minimum, and I always repeat this, at a minimum, we owe you a status update. So, we should tell you so you can find closure into that, and we can give you a timeline on when can we address it, or we can just let you know, hey, this isn't on city property sometimes, that's the issue, or whatever. So, uh, there's a failure that, that we haven't been able to been, be transparent with you and, uh, and, and give you, uh, clarity into the situation. So, that's the reason why I said I'll track it myself. Uh, during a week, we answer, I personally answer hundreds of these emails, and I'm, I'm my own constituent services, and I direct it to my departments, and I track these problems as we solve them. So, that's the reason why I'm quite alarmed to hear this today and surprised, because that's not the norm from, from my department, especially if you, you say you were with Gary Norman?
We went riding about two weeks ago.
Okay, you were with Gary Norman two weeks ago? So, yeah, so, at this point, because it's such an exception, and because, you know, it's, I'll, I'll track it alongside you, and we'll make sure we get you, uh, the closure that you need, Councilman.
You know, I, I had, um, there was a, a, on herding where the kids walk from school.
Mm-hmm.
It was some bushes growing out of the fence, and they had to sometimes walk in the street to get by.
Yep.
And I also saw a hole where they had to get in the streets to get by.
Yeah.
They went, and they cut the bushes, some of the bushes, and left them in the middle of the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
And they are still there today. I passed through on my way here, and they were still there.
Is that, is that herding by, by the golf course?
Yes.
Okay, we have to look at that.
Yeah. And, and, and that was on, that's private, I mean, public property, right?
Yes.
Where they're cutting? Okay.
I think what the problem is, if, if, I mean, some of that is on, um, where they do not do the right-aways. And that was something that was put into an ordinance back when before our time. And I've been trying to work with property standards on getting that back onto the books as far as owned to streets and drains, because it, it, it has to be something that needs to be done by the city, in my, in my opinion. Right-of-way should be a part of the city's responsibility.
Well, this is like, you got the fence, you got the sidewalk. It's growing out of the fence. And they cut off the fence and put it right in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay. But I tell you what, when you, when you send that, can you CC me on that, too, please? I mean, I know I share some of that, some of that area with Mr. Bradford and so on. Just CC me on that, please.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Flair.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you asked, uh, has there been a change, something y'all didn't tell me about? Uh, I, I thought we were doing reporter concern. On Monday morning, I get a report from the city. Uh, is, is that not effective? Because I spend a lot of time going over, some of those things are like four hundred and twenty-six days that hadn't completed. I think they've probably been completed, just haven't reported. Is, is that not, uh, the way we wanna do things?
I know, I mean, it's still effect, I mean, I think it's effective. I mean, I, I, why it's behind so far, I can't really answer that. But it is, some of those, some of those times are outdated.
Councilman, you're right about that. We, we're, this is something I've been trying to address since I got into the administration, and it's something we're working on. But, um, every department in, in the city doesn't have a good CRM system or a three, a three-one-one system where you can call, and there's a ticket number created with your problem, and then we can go back in and verify, like what happens in a lot of private businesses. So, that's something that we not only had to, we, we not only had to identify the problem, but now we're trying to stand it up in each department to create those policies. And that takes time, takes resources, takes funding. So, we're doing everything that we can to implement it. That's the reason why I've been beating up on my department heads about, at a minimum, we need to verbally communicate statuses. If we can't get to, if we can't provide, uh, the resources to solve their problem, or if we can't- or if we can't provide them a system to where they can view it themselves. So, uh, that's something that we're, we've identified and we're working through across the board. And Keith Hanson, the CTO, is, uh, very much working alongside of each department here to implement this. But yeah, uh, we, we weren't quite, um, uh, we're a bit antiquated in the way that we solved our problems.
Councilman Flurry?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, Mayor Perkins, I'm glad that you mentioned that the CTO is working on. In the book I read by your professor, Responsive Cities, Boston's program took almost two years for them to get it, to get it up to, up to where it needed to be, to be as responsive as it could be. So it's good that we've had something that we can work with, but it is inconsistent. But I've got faith that y'all are gonna get it together. It's just gonna take a little time.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right. You know, you got to remember, a lot of, a lot of us saw, uh, your campaign commercials and you struck up a lawnmower.
Yeah.
So we want to, we like to see, we like to see this, this, this file and take place.
Yeah, yeah, I should have jumped on a computer though, because I gotta put in a lot of work with our technology around here as well.
All right.
Mr. Craig Lee.
I said who that reported out last night? Uh, eleven-twelve Craig Lee, eleven-twelve Prospect Street. Uh, this past Saturday, we celebrated a hundred and eighty-three years birthday celebration for C.C. Antoine Cesar Carpenter. Antoine, I've passed you guys the flyer from this past week's celebration. We had a, a great time there. I'm also honored to be the catalyst for the revitalization efforts in this, uh, area. Uh, before the city procured the Choice Communities Grant, uh, under the direction of Bunny Moore, we were already, um, making the C.C. Antoine Square, uh, which the park is the centerpiece for this, for the Allendale Lakeside community. We were already making this a catalyst, uh, for revitalization of the Allendale Lakeside area. Senator Greg Tarver saw what we were doing, initially put four hundred thousand dollars in, he's up that to one point eight million dollars. And now with the approval of state funding for Interstate forty-nine to go through Allendale, C.C. Antoine Park, um, is going to lead the, um, revitalization efforts for this area. Uh, I, I definitely wanted to bring attention to the fact that it, as a part of this one point eight million dollars that Senator Tarver has procured, uh, six hundred thousand, he's basically told me and given that, uh, instruction to give to the city, needs to be invested into the park. Um, I lobbied for over four hundred thousand dollars a few years ago to upgrade, uh, some of the things that you see at the park. But, um, this past weekend was very evident, we had to rent two generators because there's no power grid there. And then at night, there's no lighting, um, there at the park. And, um, Councilman Bradford, we do have a young, um, gentleman who went to high school with me in elementary who has volunteered to be the designated point person to open up the restrooms on a daily basis. That's something I need to get with you and Shelley about. Uh, but, um, he said each day at the park, which they have people out there every day, um, they don't have access to the restrooms. So that's something that we, um, definitely need to, uh, address. And so, that's good, Councilman Flurry.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Tell those young people that are out there at Community Rural about C.C. Antoine. He was what?
Well, C.C. Antoine was Louisiana's third black lieutenant governor.
Lieutenant governor.
Lieutenant governor and also interim governor, um, at one point, but he migrated from New Orleans to Shreveport and became state senator in eighteen sixty-eight. Uh, we were blessed this past weekend too, to have his great-great nephew and his great-great niece, Tamelin Carpenter Antoine and Yvonne Wolf. They flew in, uh, at their own, um, charge all the way from Washington, D.C. And they had a wonderful time and, um, definitely want to thank, um, uh, Dee Chapman of Orlando's Restaurant. He was one of our primary sponsors, so we gave him a lot of great food, uh, to take back to, uh, D.C. and, and we had a great, uh, celebration. But this is critical to now telling our story, um, in order to expand our footprint in the tourism industry, uh, for the state of Louisiana.
Well, I, I hear you saying it over and over and over about some Tarver bringing that point, but I think he forgets that he, his history, uh, he's a legend, uh, and that's important, that people know that he comes, lieutenant governor and from Shreveport.
I mean, you, let me tell you, it, it, it's very critical. What, one of the reasons that Shreveport doesn't do a good job in terms of the tourism piece, uh, there are several things, but we don't never tell our story. You got Alabama and Georgia, um, pretending to be the, um, lead advocates for civil rights and human rights when in actuality it was Louisiana. Um, the S E O C started in Louisiana, the bus boycott started in Louisiana. Um, but part of telling the story, you have to be willing to tell the bad part as well as the good part. Um, I was glad to see the mayor, um, celebrate, um, Sam Cooke. Uh, that's a part of the history that we have to tell because a change has come, but a change needed to come at that particular point in time. And C.C. Antoine, uh, represents that. And if we tell our story, which is part of the reason that we were able to procure that grant for Choice Communities, we can now elevate and make that Allendale, let Better Heights, um, area, a revitalized area, so that we can now promote the city of Shreveport and gain access to those tourism dollars. So I'm proud to be, um, the vanguard for the legacy. And, um, come October, we'll be, um, um, doing a fundraiser because we're gonna get a, um, a marker at the church, but we're gonna, um, do the new street sign, uh, at the old General Motors Boulevard, which is also the Antoine Boulevard, and now create a historic trio from that particular part.
Mr. Lee, is there an biography published of Mr. Antoine?
Say it again.
An biography, a, a book about his life?
We're working on that right now. Uh, uh, Councilman Nicholson, um, he is a part of a book that was written on the Citizens Committee of New Orleans. Um, so they're, they're pieces of the puzzle. And I'm glad you asked that question because Tanisha Morris, um, was one of two people that we awarded the, um, C.C. Antoine Business Excellence Award. She's a filmmaker and she did the Shreveport Urban Film Festival this year. She's agreed to partnership with us to tell a documentary, do a documentary on C.C. Antoine. So they are pieces of the puzzle, um, that are phenomenal, that deal with the War of eighteen twelve, going back to Africa and coming to Shreveport. And once we can tell that story, that's gonna really, um, elevate us on a national stage.
A worthy project to me.
Thank you.
So, let me, um, be, now I came by, you were where I came by and...
Yeah, it was a hundred and three.
But anyway, uh, we left the proclamation.
Yeah, we got it.
Did the family get that?
Yeah, they got it.
Okay.
They were honored.
They was honored?
Yeah.
Good. Now, when I was there, Craig, I did, I did see a, a, an electric grid. Is that not?
It's, it's not functioning.
It's not functioning?
Yeah. See, that, that, that grid had, had been going out for years. Uh, we had, we had told, um, Shelley, I wanted the lighting and that grid to be a part of the initial money, but it wasn't in the design phase. So in this next phase, and I'm gonna have to Bogart on it because we, there, there has to be lighting and power at that place. And because that's a nice part. And we can have concerts and other things going on because we gotta get people acclimated to understanding that Allendale is not a dangerous, uh, area.
Well, it really complements the Lakeside Park.
Exactly.
Because, you know, if you look at Southern Hills or Airport, they have the grounds as well as the, the facility.
Exactly.
The Lakeside Park is, is, is heavily utilized for the inside activities, but C.C. Antoine is, is, is utilized for the baseball and, and all the outside activities.
Exactly.
So, but I wanted to congratulate you. I, I, I was headed out to a funeral and I dropped by. It was very hot. I hope y'all had some fans out there at the end. But also acknowledge that, uh, C.C. Antoine lived in Shreveport and his house is on Pier and, and it's, it's a, it's, it's designated as historical building, is that right?
Historic marker and part of the master plan to, to do this is to build a replica of the house on Anna. So when I revealed the plan to, uh, Bunny, they liked it, uh, because he was a, uh, mason under the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge. And so if you look at the corner of Mylin and Sycamore, Anna and Sycamore, Mylin and Pier, and My, uh, Pier and Anna, that four block radius serves as what we call C.C. Antoine Square. Want to build a replica of the house because the house is in real bad condition on Pier and, but build a replica of it, turn it into a museum and now infuse that whole area, uh, where it becomes a tourist, uh, attraction from that standpoint. So, um, yeah, um, and, and, and still, even when we tear the house down on Pier, uh, Pier and Anna, that four block radius serves as what we call C.C. Antoine Square. Want to build a replica of the house because the house is in real bad condition on Pier and, but build a replica of it, turn it into a museum and now infuse that whole area, uh, where it becomes a tourist, uh, attraction from that standpoint. So, um, yeah, um, and, and, and still, even when we tear the house down on Pier, uh, Pier and Anna, we need to build a community garden, uh, right behind that church so that that can be seen.
I think that's, that's all a part of the, uh, the grant that Greg Tarver provided to, to renovate that in some way. And I think, you know, as long as it's, has some parts of that house.
Exactly.
On the new property, that'd be a good thing. But anyway, uh, thank you for your work on that and again, for another successful C.C. Antoine celebration.
All right, thanks.
And Mr. Lee, really quick, uh, before you go. So, um, right now, we're talking GO bonds stuff throughout the city. We're educating the city about the cities, um, our bonding process and how we pay for capital projects. The project that you're talking about and the funding that, uh, Senator Tarver has secured for the C.C. Antoine Park, I'd ask you to continue that advocacy, um, you know, along with the senator, but try to get all of our legislators to get on, on board with it because just because that, uh, state funding, with the state, state capital outlay project was approved, the state hadn't yet allocated funding for it. And every year, we have to resubmit, um, our capital outlay request. So again, we got an election coming up, stay on top of this, stay on top of our legislators and all in our community that are supporting this project should do the same. Uh, and, and we'll do it from our part. Any state assistance that we can get, we can talk about the general obligation, uh, projects that we have locally, but any state assistance that we can get to help us with the power grid you're talking about and anything else, uh, will be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
And, and, and Mayor, the, the, the challenge there before you got in office, uh, Senator Tarver had put a million in, but there were challenges under the previous administration of not wanting to do anything. So that's why he said at least six hundred thousand needs to go to the park. And once you start to do some work, then you create the, the caveat of the state, you know, putting more money in. So I'm, I'm with you one hundred percent on that. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, I'd like to make a remark.
Okay.
And, and my remark is simply that Mr. Lester Smith, uh, made some very compelling, uh, statements to the council regarding an incident that happened on, uh, August the fifth. It made national news, I'm sure you saw that, and it was embarrassing to the city. Now, and I appreciate the mayor and the chief, um, responding appropriate to that situation, but it, it, it has to be, it has to be accountable. And it has to be accountable because our police officers are trained to do better and to be better than that. We can't, we can't ever dismiss it as, as something normal when it's, when it's, creates such a, such a bad reflection upon this city. When you're trained to do a job, you go by your training. You don't divert from your training. You, 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 you give respect in all areas of the situation, regardless of how frustrated or how rude or uncompliant somebody may be. And that's what we expect. We can't, we can't never allow that type of behavior to be acceptable. So, Mr. Smith, I appreciate you coming down and making those expressions. And we have to, as a city, in all that we're doing, we're doing, we're doing things and promoting our city in a positive light, and we cannot, uh, ever accept that type of behavior from anybody, uh, who's, who's representing the city in any way. Because again, it's a reflection on all of us when things like that happen. I'm, I'm, I'm more trust that, uh, as it goes through the other aspects of this, that, uh, everybody would, would act sensitive and, and appropriate to what, what has transpired in that situation. But I again, appreciate you expressing those and it did not go unnoticed or without, without our critique and, and understanding, but we know that's a process. A lot of people on social media was, was, uh, complaining that, that the elected officials wasn't, wasn't making statements. And I, I expressed to sound that, um, let's let it go through the proper process, in which it did, but, uh, but it was still, once it made the national news and everybody started to reply with anger about that situation. It was certainly inappropriate, but, uh, but hopefully the resolve would be better and we would be better after that. Thank you, Vian, for coming down.
Yeah. Count, uh, Mr. Chairman, just if I can comment as well, um, you, you're right, Councilman Bradford, and, and thank you for those comments, Mr. Smith. We are handling that situation, uh, accordingly. But it's interesting when these things make national news and they pop up because, uh, we're in an investigative process that we can't talk or it could take, it could take the process and, uh, there won't be justice at the end of it. So, uh, just because we're silent, know that we are working on this and to clear up some other rumors that we heard. You know, the officers are unpaid leave, not paid leave. I saw, I saw and have heard people saying that. And, and like I said, we are, we are going through the process, but what I've committed to is community oriented policing. And every time we get an instance like that, that again, is unacceptable and deplorable, uh, it eats away at the public trust that we need in order to implement that program. Uh, Chief Raymond has been the chief now for about eight months and is doing all that he can, from what I can see, uh, to make sure that he is, um, changing the culture of the police department, uh, which takes time as well. And I'll make sure I continue to hold him accountable because I know the people of Shreveport are gonna hold me accountable in doing it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Bradford. We have the following executive appointments to be considered today. And I think all of them came up and spoke yesterday. Everyone come up yesterday?
Yeah.
Did we miss one? No? Okay. Which is, um, again, I'll just reclaim, rename, which is the zoning boards of appeal, uh, Brittany Dunn. Silver service board was Brian Hollis, Haseen Jones, Henry Walker, and Jonathan Skoggan and Ebony Norris. Councilman?
Can we vote all of them?
If there's not a consensus.
You can take them all at once if you want to.
Take them all at one time if that's okay with everybody.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Flurry, uh, for the executive appointments to be considered. If there's no other discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Congratulations to you, Mr. Walker.
Congratulations.
All right. Uh, there are no items under consent agenda, am I correct?
Uh, we have one, it's Resolution one fourteen, which authorizes a purchasing agent to reject all bids received for bus shelters.
So moved. Second with the questions, Chairman.
Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Washington, leave that. Okay. And I, I failed to, I guess, give you an explanation yesterday. Can you, can you give us an explanation why you feel like this and this here?
Yes, sir. Um, we received, uh, four bids in response to this IFB. Uh, two of them were non-responsive for technical errors with the bids. Uh, one of them was late, so I guess we could say we only received three bids. Uh, the one bid that we had was the highest bid. It was about twenty percent over the budget estimate. Uh, we feel we can get, uh, uh, more shelters for our dollars if we get back out for bid.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage, the first is Resolution one hundred eight.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Um, I, uh, had an opportunity to speak with our bond counsel and he confirmed for
If there's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I do have a question.
Councilman Bradford.
Attorney Correia, and I know even the first response from the Bond Commission was beyond what we could control. In this instance, were there some type of confirmation, verification that this is indeed proper language, or was this a verbal exchange?
To my understanding, it was a verbal exchange. What it primarily boiled down to was a preference in language in terms of specifics, in terms of how words were used, specifically the way one analyst or employee of the Bond Commission would review proposed bond legislation versus another. It was more of a, I don't want to use the term personal preference because she was doing so in her professional capacity, but there was nothing legally deficient with the language in the proposal that was submitted to the Bond Commission, and I believe that is ultimately why we are able to withdraw this legislation because it's no longer necessary.
And the appropriate and authorized person who made this judgment had the authority to make this judgment?
Yes. Bond counsel informed me that he had direct conversation with the head of the Bond Commission, who informed him that they would be able to go and to accept the language that was already submitted and that there was no need for any additional legislation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Saying no, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 110 authorizes a mayor to make application with the United States Department of Justice for a JAG grant.
So moved.
Second. Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Fleur. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 115 has been adopted. Resolution 116 authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 9200 block of Bear Road between Richwood and Burt Coons to Richard Ricky Crockett Leonard.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Fleur and seconded by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. I think I beat you on the other end.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. We have one resolution to be introduced, 117, acknowledging that the city council has reviewed the 2019 internal municipal water pollution prevention report concerning the North Regional and Lucas wastewater plants.
Move introduction.
All right.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we're now in the introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 92A amends section 1-15 of chapter 1, general provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to misdemeanor offenses and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 119 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 120 amends the 2019 capital development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 121 amends the 2019 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 122 amends the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 123 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor to lease agreement of city-owned property located at 1506 Abbey Street to the Serenity Club of Shreveport Inc. for the purpose of lessy to use it for programs and to maintain the building and ground. Said property is not needed for a public purpose and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Ordinance 124 amends chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to buildings and building regulations. Ordinance 125 amends chapter 102, article 3A, section 102-88 of the Code regarding transportation network companies. Ordinance 126 amends chapter 74, article 3, section 74-56 of the Code relative to solid waste revenues. Those are all of the ordinances to be introduced.
Move introduction, second.
We're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 107 amends the 2019 airport enterprise fund budget.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Butcher. 107. No discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 108 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Butcher. 108. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 109 amends the 2019 capital committee to development special revenue fund budget.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford. 109. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 110 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget concerning Knight Street improvements.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Vice Chair Nicholson. Sorry. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 111 amends a 2019 budget for the special revenue fund. It is a companion to 110 and to 112.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Fleur. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 112 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget for the Linwood Avenue reconstruction project as a companion to 111.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Fleur. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 113 amends the 2019 street special revenue fund budget for the Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote.
A question, Mr. Chairman. Who's second?
Councilman Green.
Thank you.
Would you like to hold back and you want to second?
No. I just didn't hear.
They really are jumping them. I'm running around in a hurry if y'all just want to be on my record.
The city attorney has to go out to dinner today, so this is her anniversary, so get all the city business out of the way.
Hey, keep it going. For you, Ms. Correia.
Thank you.
And that motion carries with seven. Congratulations on the life.
Ordinance 114 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. This is a companion to 112.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Butcher. No discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 115 authorizes mayor to exchange surplus city-owned immovable property and all improvements thereon located at 3406 Velva Avenue, commonly referred to as a form of Fire Station 8.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Green. No discussion, please vote.
Can't vote until 24.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that right?
Yeah, motion to postpone.
Okay.
Motion to postpone.
Second. Wait, is that? Isn't that serious?
Mr. Green, you had me moving too fast.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, I'm ready for this.
Is that, is the motion postponed? Is that serious?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 116 amends section 58-117 and 58-118 of the Code. There is one amendment. The amendment adds the following additional language, quote, "A separate offense shall be deemed committed on each day during or on which a violation occurs or continues."
So moved on the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Vice Chair Nicholson.
Move as amended.
That motion carries with seven, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion on the amendment.
Motion.
It's been moved by Councilman Green.
On the ordinance as amended, yes, sir.
Second.
And seconded by the vice chair. That motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 117 is a zoning matter, 19-362C. It re-zones property located on the south side of Greenwood Road approximately 120 feet, 25 feet west of Broadway Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to IMU Industrial Mixed Use District.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 118 is a zoning matter case number 19-371C. It re-zones property located on the southwest corner of Greenwood Road and Maywood Drive from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
So moved.
It's been moved by the chair, seconded by the vice chair. Number 118, if there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished with the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move on, and there were several projects that's going to require action from the administration, the streets and then the red light. Can you give us any type of time analysis that these projects would start?
Sure. We can have Patrick can come up and give a general idea of how long it would take, and then we can refine those details and provide you all with more information if we need to.
Okay. I'm just.
It's a take a couple hours, honey.
I'm sorry?
It's a take a couple hours, honey.
At least, at least a couple hours.
I can get you a full schedule, but I think Linwood's going to be the quickest out of the gate. It's going to require the smallest amount of design since we're just removing and replacing, and we already have a pretty good template from what we've done from phase one and phase two. So, we'll have the phase four legislation for the funding in front of you soon, and we anticipate bidding phase three and four together as one big project. And then the traffic light at Walslake and Southern Loop, perhaps next spring, considering, you know, going out and hiring an engineer and putting the design together and going out for bids, that's a rough timeframe.
And thank you, Patrick. And the mayor would understand how shocked I am because he got a meeting come Thursday, and the previous meeting, you know, we got bombarded with, y'all always starting projects or voting on projects and then they'll get finished.
Sure. And Knight Street, I can have a better update, but we're going back to the designer to polish those.
We just want to be able to say before we leave this council that we at least finish some projects.
Yes, sir.
And I want to also commend Patrick and let you all know that we're working with all the contractors with our roads to make sure that we are getting a much higher quality out of the road improvements that we're making across every neighborhood in our city as well. We're watching it extremely closely, and I mean, even just some of the changes I've seen over the last couple of months. Patrick's office, Quinn, I can't say Quinn has an office because it's just him, but the enforcement mechanisms that we've been doing with our contractors have been a lot different than when I got here in January, so we will continue to keep that up to make sure that our streets are being taken care of properly and we're not rushing projects and being responsive to our citizens throughout, so.
Thank you.
Patrick.
I'll be looking for mine around Easter.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, real quick. Patrick, if you don't mind, if you'll just kind of keep us up to date on that red light because I know that people are going to be asking questions since, you know, I think they probably think it'll move a little faster, but if you'll just keep me updated, I'll kind of try to update you.
Absolutely.
And then also, also, I want to commend you and everybody that was involved in that the water leak at Southern Loop and Wallace, I mean, Southern Loop, I'm so used to talking about Wallace Lake Road, Southern Loop and Norris Ferry Road, very timely, everything was done very quickly, and I was thinking, oh, gosh, when they first redid the road, it was very, very bumpy, but then you've got a contractor out there and you can't even tell, so there is a marked difference in what y'all are doing. So, I appreciate the timely response to that and getting that road back and going. I mean, within a matter of four days, everything was back up and running, so I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. That was mostly the Water and Sewer Department working with local contractors. Engineering did provide some assistance with the direction for putting the road back, but it was a team effort.
Whoever y'all used did an excellent job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be forwarding you a request of service in regards to Huron Avenue. I'm getting complaints.
Councilman Bradford, I'm on the board.
To address Patrick?
Okay, are you? I'm sorry. I thought you had something else.
I just, I did have something else, but I had this too. I want to thank you and your team for how responsive y'all have been with all the different things going on in District B, especially with certain businesses that were looking for heads up on stuff. I really appreciate that y'all are trying to get that communication to be a little more smoothly and, you know, a little preemptive, but also, I've emailed this, but it has to consent decree. I'm just so happy with Mr. Drayton Dunn and the job he's doing on communicating with everybody. It just makes things go so smooth to be able to have someone that can just kind of jump in and say, this is where we are, this is what's going on, and then he'll go back with the residents as well as much as he can, and I think that that's just a great thing right now, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those remarks, and I think you can see it getting better, but it's going to get a lot better. They're just really getting started and getting their feet wet and getting a feel for it, and they're improving every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, my question is, is that citizens are complaining that between Logan, I'm on Huron now, between Logan and Ernest B. Miller, that that section of Huron Avenue is like going with speed bumps. I know that's a state highway. Are we responsible for fixing that? Because I'm going to send you a request.
No, sir.
We're not. That's a state project.
Yes, sir. If this section's a state road.
Yeah. Okay, so I just need to forward it to the...
We can coordinate with the state, Public Works and the state, they coordinate.
I sent it to you anyway.
You can send it to me and I'll get it to the right person.
You'll work on it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, send it to the appropriate people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Fleur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Perkins, I'd like to comment on what you just said about the road's work. I'm kind of like James Green in the fact that I just can't seem to wrap my head around...
Brain.
Brain.
My brain.
...around the fact that we, when I came here on the council, there was a road up in District A that I went on a tour up there. A large sum of money was put on the road, and it was built with flaw, it was flawed, and the contractor was flawed. Now, there at one time was a pomegranate tree growing up in the middle of the road. But what I'm seeing, what you just said, makes a lot of sense that we hold contractors to a high standard if they're going to do work for the city. I was, it was unbelievable when I toured up there to see where all of the cash, as some might say, we put all of our eggs in one basket, and to see how that road was so flawed, it was unbelievable. And then it began to show all of its problems and no backup, we couldn't come against the contractor. And so what you have just said means a lot, that we're going to hold people to a higher standard. I just want to tell you, you preaching to the choir here, I could not get over, as a matter of fact, I didn't sleep two nights thinking that we spent $3.4 million of the taxpayers' money on that street, and we got a shaft put to it.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilman, if I can, I have a story about that street you're talking about, it'll be quick, but when I was campaigning, somebody told me about this street and I didn't believe them, but you can actually Google, there was a street in District A that had a tree growing out of the street because it was that damaging, that flawed. There was an actual tree growing out of the street, and that is a nightmare. As a matter... As a matter of fact, even last week, and these were projects that were completed over a year ago, I was driving on another road in District A in Allendale neighborhood, and I called Patrick to ask him who was the engineers responsible for this particular street, but, yeah, we found some very egregious things when we actually kind of peel back the onion on some of these projects, and they'll send, you know, an example, they'll send some of their most junior or no experience inspectors out to some sites that are in minority neighborhoods, or they'll do on-the-job training, and they won't have a senior inspector, in all of our neighborhoods, and they won't have a senior inspector come and look at the work after it's been completed. So again, we're making sure that we are going to be holding them accountable, and we will go to the full extent of that, which, the fullest extent from what we can do from our side is disbar engineering companies from doing work in our city, and we're not afraid to do that. The citizens of Shreveport deserve a high quality of work, and we're going to do all we can to make sure that that's what they're getting. So, thank you, Counsel.
I'm with you on this.
Hey, Counselman Green.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for all the work that you do and that you're doing. On Jewell going south, after you cross the bridge, I'm getting a lot of complaints that all of the lights are out once you cross the bridge going south. I don't know if those are, if the city is responsible or if SWPCO, but I would be happy if you would check into it.
I'll be happy, you talked about the bridge that, right before you get to, I guess, 70th Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, so once you get across it, before, right before you get to 70th Street, are all the lights out on Jewell?
Certainly, if it's SWPCO, we'll get ahold of them too and make sure they understand.
Thank you, Gary. Thank for all the work you do, man.
All right. Any other, I don't have any appeals, so, am I right, Mr. Thompson? No appeal, okay. Any reports from officer boards and committee?
Mr. Chairman. Monday or Tuesday of the following week, we'll be planning a public sector committee meeting, probably right before the council meeting. I'll let y'all know soon.
Okay, Counselman Green.
Thank you. Mr. Kriel, I, I'm over here, I'd just like to thank you for the overview today that you did about the bond. I'd just like to say thank you. I've known you a long time, you always accurate on all of what you do, and I really appreciate that overview that you gave today. Yes, sir.
No charge.
But I need you to explain that I, I still don't know about that loom that you was talking about, I'd like to know a little more about it. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Thompson, a quick report.
We have none today, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mayor Perkins, you have any additional communications?
The only thing I want to talk about is the 9/11, remind everybody tuning in and everybody in the audience about, about the 9/11 memorial tomorrow morning at 8:00. And what's the location?
Six, is it 600?
Oh, at the Police, Police and Fire Memorial on Clyde Fenn, so we'll be happy to see as many people as we can out there.
All right. And does any other council member have any additional communications?
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question.
Bradford.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Bradford.
Okay. We received the schedule, the budget here, the budget review schedule, and the second day is on election day. Was that, is that, what, Mr. Kriel?
I just, you pulled it.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to see if that was firm or is that, is that could be, we can, made it, I mean, I know that, I know we tight, but I, I don't know the opinion of the council in regards to any efforts, some council members to promote the bond or, or just, just meet anyway because it's already a meeting, it's a Saturday.
Well, we've coordinated with Ms. White to set the schedule, but if the council's interested in changing, I can get with her, and we can see what some other updates are available.
But it would be helpful, I think, if council members have days that they don't want to do it, or that they prefer, or that we would know that.
Now, if the date is consistent with the previous meetings, is there, is there a timeframe in which we need to have this done prior to the November, the December deadline?
Yeah, we typically have it done before, before December to give you all time to be able to deliberate, make changes, ask questions, things of that nature.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased for the, the meetings to be pushed earlier a bit to accommodate the concern that Counselman Bradford is raising. I wouldn't want to see them pushed any later.
I got that, I got that message, I think it was Counselman Flur sent me that email, and I, I didn't respond to it. I talked to Jack about it, just trying to look for another date, now trying to find a date that was not pushing me back to a Cowboys football game, but we were, we were looking at some dates. But honestly, well, we are, I talked to Ms. White and we'll, we'll accommodate, and try to get it beforehand.
Mr. Thompson, you said you wanted some dates that we couldn't meet, as long as it ain't on Sunday, I'm good.
You're good?
Yes.
Is that, is that the day you work?
Yes, my work. That's because of my other job.
So the question now is, would the administration be ready, would the departments be ready before the 16?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, would be ready.
We'll work with whatever you.
Okay.
I'll get with that. I work on Wiki.
We'll come up with some dates tomorrow. All right. Any other council member? I don't know what else to say, but anything else?
Happy anniversary, Ms. Kriel.
Happy anniversary, Ms. Kriel. Lunch is on you, I mean, dinner on you tonight.
Uh, no.
Mr. Chairman.